My grandma has a three o'clock in the morning.
Oh, that's exciting.
Hi, morning. Today's June twentieth, two thousand nineteen. We're beginning our work session as we could stand for the pledge. Chief, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Jody, you were just saying you became a grandma today. Congratulations.
Yes, we're very excited.
Boy, girl?
A boy.
Oh, very nice.
Yes, we're gonna head down to DC hopefully tomorrow afternoon.
Oh, very nice. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Lauren?
No, Mike.
Oh, okay.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Okay, chief.
All right, come on up. We're starting Advisory Committee annual reports. We're starting with Traffic Safety Committee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
How often do you meet? You meet like once twice a month, right?
Uh, the fourth Thursday of every month at eight thirty in the morning, right here in this room.
Yeah, you meet pretty regularly, I know that.
We can thank John Dunleavy for.
No, I think we're thanking Mr. Bartnik because he started it back way back when.
Really?
He was the first chairperson. Um, the members are Councilman Giglio, Highway Superintendent Woodson, uh, myself as the chair, Drew Dillingham, town engineer, and our resident resident is Antoinette Carbone. Well, I thought it was gonna be here this morning, but.
And Mary.
Oh, yes, I have her down. Recording Secretary Mary Komisinski. So, um, our mission is the safety of all people who use our roads in the town. And that's all roads in the town, even though they're made up of state, county, and town roads. Um, go over some MBA stats, which I think are, I'll give you this too. So this is a typical meeting. It was last month. This is how we kind of boil it down with what happened. Mary also does minutes on the meeting.
So what we do is we get calls and sometimes the people that have certain things that they're want to see changed. The biggest issue that we have now is Middle Road. They wanna change the weight limits and, um, so we've looked at that and the Highway Superintendent and the Chief of Police and everybody's weighed in. I think we already lowered that down to eight thousand.
Eight tons.
Eight tons.
Eight tons. But they want it brought down to five tons. So things of that nature or where people think that a stop sign may be needed or when they think that the speed limit should be lowered and then we write letters to the state asking for permission to lower the speed limit and, um, you see a lot of resolutions that address certain intersections in the town where stop signs are in place. The most recent one that we completely went through was Two Bears.
And put stop signs in place.
Yes. With the help of the Highway Superintendent and he's been great.
So just to go off that, as everyone knows, we're all well aware, but I don't know if the public's aware, we don't set our own speed limits. We rely on the state to do that. We've been trying to get that changed for.
It's in legislation every single year.
But good news, I just got a email from Angela Nuncaro from the Assemblyman's Office.
Assemblyman Palumbo.
Right, it passed the assembly and it passed the senate.
Wow.
So it's on the governor's desk this time.
Terrific.
That is good news, for sure.
Yes, chief put together a very comprehensive report as to why our town should be able to dictate our own speed limits. And, uh, the Assemblymen had asked that from us and I guess it was that good, chief. See how good you are.
Are there other towns in New York State that do that?
Uh, no, it would be, it would be, it would be all the towns, right?
Correct.
It's all the towns. Everybody signs on.
There was some, I think, upstate that were able to do that, had special permission or something like that, but yeah, no, this would be comprehensive.
Yeah, and it was an Upper Westchester Assemblyman, I think, that was pushing for it also and had garnered support on the other side of the aisle to make it happen.
So the way that's worked in the past is that we send a TE nine to the state to ask them to study a road. They come out and they put out the tubes and the signs and stuff like that and they find out what the speed limit is, the actual speed limit is. And what they based on is what's called the eighty-fifth percentile. So whatever eighty-five percent of what the people are driving, because they feel the people drive the right speed to handle the road conditions, that's what they establish the speed at.
Who drives the right speed to handle road conditions?
That's the rule they use.
That's a horrible unit of measurement, I think.
They do look at accidents also, 'cause when they see the reports come back, it seems to be, it seems to be accidents also.
Comprehensive study of it, so. So hopefully that'll change in the future and we'll see what happens if the governor signs it or not. So, uh, accidents, I got some stats for you in front.
This looks like pretty flat.
It's pretty flat, actually, and I would say over the last four years, it's actually taken a little bit of a decline.
Is your town wide?
This is town wide. I do. Uh, where are you, John?
Which is pretty amazing by the amount of vehicle traffic we have.
Right. Right.
Especially fifty-eight, that place is a bumper cars all over.
Um, we also have the heat map of the accidents throughout the town.
Pretty fancy stuff.
We're getting there.
I know. It's so tech sadly.
We're getting there.
A heat map.
A heat map. So obviously the fifty-eight corridor is, is very high with accidents downtown. State Route twenty-five, Main Street also.
I know, I know we had talked about to the DOT, just maybe just to take back to the committee, the light right on, on Main Street by Rowan Oak there.
Right.
Um, because when they have the left hand, the, the, uh, the, the green to make the left onto Rowan Oak heading, if you're heading east, if there's a big truck in the, in the, in the, um, in the, in the second lane, you can't see the other through traffic when people go to make the turn. I know we have a lot of accidents on that corner just for that reason, because it's blind sight. Um, so is there any way that, that, I know we had talked to them about one time, but maybe that this committee can, uh, pursue that?
We can approach, yeah, we can approach the state again. I mean, that, that intersection's constantly studied. Uh, it's a bad intersection.
It's an F reading in our boa study.
Well, if, if, if it, if you could, if, if it was a turn signal only to turn on left onto Rowan Oak, you know, you could only, it, it would be a turn signal, you can make the left onto Rowan Oak from, but, and so you couldn't, when the, the light is green, heading, uh, west on Main, uh, heading west on Main, you couldn't make the left onto Rowan Oak. Because that's where the accidents happen.
Well, then you would have to have an arrow, a red arrow.
Yeah, then you'd have to have a whole other cycle of stop traffic in the other directions.
Yeah, 'cause you.
So you're gonna back up even more than what it already is.
So there's no left turn there, how's that?
Well, you can't.
We have no left turn southbound on Rowan Oak.
But no, how about no left turn off of twenty-five onto Rowan Oak? Probably the accidents happen.
Right in front of Tweeds, there's a, a car would get stuck there if there was an arrow that stopped and turned red. There would be a car that would get stuck there.
You're abso, she's absolutely right. I mean, you come eastbound on twenty-five and you wanna make a left-hand turn onto Rowan Oak Avenue to head north. And of course you got the, the, the traffic going down Pecanic Avenue stopped and of course the other lane, the second lane is going continue west on Main Street.
You can't see him.
And they, they, the guy waves a "one" to me while they cut into traffic.
Yep.
You get accidents all the time.
So you couldn't go that, you couldn't, this way couldn't happen when this light is green.
I think that the ambulance district had expressed concerns about that because when they're coming over down Pecanic Avenue, they need to get a straight route to the hospital and they didn't even want any detours down Court Street or.
They could, they could do it. They just couldn't, I mean, the ambulance can override it, but they just couldn't do it when these lights are green.
So what about a preempting green arrow?
If you had a green arrow here, that's.
Turning to red.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. Yes, yes. That would be fun.
So giving them a, a little bit to get in there.
That's true.
Like at Edwards and what's the other intersection where we do that? Pulaski and Rowan Oak?
Pulaski and Pulaski.
But it's just, it's, because this, this, this is where the accidents are always happening, right here with this, this car and this car.
Yeah, westbound going and eastbound coming across.
Yeah, from the second lane there.
Yep, you're right. It works out very well at Pulaski and Rowan Oak. It does.
Thank you.
It does that also up at Costco.
Took me fi, took me five years to get that in there.
Three stores. They'll give you the green to go. There's a few, like Edwards Avenue and Sound Avenue does it too. They work out well. And I just actually wrote to the state about twenty-five and Edwards, because the traffic going eastbound is getting to be pretty heavy as far as that light stopping everybody, so.
Well, they'll be doing that whole intersection.
Have you seen the planning board studies for the Hilton Hotel where they're proposing a traffic light on Route fifty-eight where twenty-five and Route fifty-eight intersect?
Twenty-five and.
So right when you get off the expressway, when you're at east and you're getting off at twenty-five or, yeah.
Exit seventy-two off the express.
Seventy-two, there's the divider that stops you from going into the left lane. They're proposing a traffic light right there to get into the Hilton.
The road's this way and then it goes this way and then comes in this way. They're proposing over here.
I noticed that you, it's more than just traffic studies it looks like you're doing. It looks like you're looking, parking on lawns? Is that, is that a traffic hazard?
Uh, no, but it, it is a concern with people parking on lawns, so, um, I don't think we've addressed that as far as.
I've asked the Code Revision Committee to look at it in March of last year and then also March of this year and again in June.
I think it's been on there for about eight years. That, that, that one, we went back and looked at some of the, uh.
But you haven't really addressed it.
That really has come up more at our downtown meetings than. That really has come up at our downtown meetings more than traffic safety.
I think, I think it's come, I think it, it can go to code revisions instead of having everybody look at it.
It's been there since March of last year in code revision.
Yeah, I don't know why it would be on traffic safety.
Okay, so some of our major concerns on traffic safety are repeating concerns or speeding. So, uh, we get a lot of complaints about speeding on the roadways and stuff like that. So we're out there with, um, our speed signs. We got two new ones this year. So, um, they kind of alert the drivers to slow down. We then kind of follow it up with enforcement.
Yeah, I'm not sure I like all those flash lights on there.
We had some success in Waiting River on North Waiting River Road. We had an officer out there writing numerous tickets for people.
It seems people are slowing, slowing down. I think the signs do, you know, and then you had cars not too far from the signs also giving tickets. So I think that, that, that it has helped, I think, you know, but it's, it's something that, that needs to continue.
We used to pull over a police chief all the time at Waiting River for speed. Gee, what did that was?
It must have been on.
Yeah.
Chief Pryor. Gotta be very, yes, you have to pay attention to your speed. If you have a problem with speed, there's always cruise control. Set it at thirty-five and you're good to go. Uh, so the only thing with the speed signs are they have to make a rotation. They can't stay in one place forever, so.
And they're based mostly on taxpayer complaints.
Right, sure.
Yeah, complaint driven, yeah.
Neighborhood complaints and then when you write the tickets, the neighbors are ones getting the tickets. So they're not happy either way. Uh, stop signs, we have numerous requests for stop signs and I think if it was up to many people, there would be stop sign on every intersection in the town. So we can't have that, stop signs, and this is my mantra, are meant to regulate the flow of traffic, not to reduce the speed of traffic. Visibility at intersections, our resident resident loves to tell us all about the visibility at certain intersections. Uh, we send officers out there to take a look at that, make sure there is a problem and then we try to correct it with the homeowner.
Yep, and the Highway Superintendent will also, if it's in the right of way, he'll go down and trim the bushes or trim the hedges so that it, it frees up the site.
Right, and, and I think that's in code revision too, actually. Um, our code says thirty feet from the intersection.
We want it thirty feet from the curb.
So if you made that triangle on the corner, thirty feet and thirty feet, anything in that triangle can't be higher than three feet or lower than six feet. So there's a window to look through there. Um, trucks, it's another one of our continuous and, and you said it before, uh, they want to eliminate trucks on Middle Road. I don't know if that's a possibility. You saw many local deliveries going there. Um, but I think many complaints come in about truck traffic throughout the town.
But we did have eight stops of the trucks on Middle Road that were overweight.
Right.
And then also speeding and.
We're up there doing enforcement on that too, so.
Yeah, actually someone complained to me a couple of weeks ago, right, um, near Bating Hall, your street, near Bating Hall Drive and Sound. Um, Audi Warner was in a bad accident 'cause a, a really huge truck was flying around by there.
Yeah, they go really fast coming down around Sound Avenue and you can't see them around the curb.
I mean, I really, the weight of, the size and the weight of the trucks are just too big for that little road.
Right, but then we also discussed the Traffic Safety Committee. If we restrict the trucks from being on Middle Road, then they're gonna get pushed out to twenty-five and then also Sound Avenue if they can no longer go that way. So it's gonna increase the truck traffic on twenty-five. So we were talking about local deliveries only on Middle Road for some of the companies that we have and the farmers, of course, would be exempt, but the, um, it's, it's a challenge because the, the more you restrict, you're pushing the traffic elsewhere.
Except that Sound is narrow and kind of windy and they get a lot of speed going on there. Maybe we could at least put some speed things out.
Yeah.
Because some, there's, it just seems like the, there are so many more large trucks flying down Sound Avenue now.
Yeah, there is, and, and that's something that Geo and I have been talking about since I got elected is from Edwards Avenue all the way to one oh five, limiting the truck traffic to local traffic only. And because you're getting a lot of concrete trucks and other trucks that are going out to Southhold or going to Shelter Island that are just speeding through. I mean, they're just passing through Riverhead and Sound Avenue is not built for that type of traffic with the, um, road specifications, so.
Or the gateway to Southhold.
Right.
I guess you know where your next speed, speed, uh.
Yeah.
Sound Avenue.
Yep. So slow down there.
Well, eventually we'll just buy the railroad from Reap Hank to Greenport and make that a truck route, so.
But it's almost that the truckers have to plan their deliveries better because they're coming through at all times of the day. And if, you know, Route fifty-eight, there's nobody on Route fifty-eight until ten AM when all the stores open. So if all the trucks were coming down Route fifty-eight and twenty-five earlier in the day, then it would alleviate a lot of the traffic on Sound Avenue and on Middle Road.
Well, the size of the trucks.
Yeah.
They're just so big.
Here she is.
If they hit someone, you know, I almost feel like they should go slow on.
It's almost, it's nine twenty-three, actually.
We already told them, we're talking about Middle Road.
Let's not tell her, all right?
Good morning. Good morning. Um, one of the other things is we had, the DOT was supposed to come put up some no parking signs over there in Jamesport. They approved that.
They haven't.
I haven't seen them up there. If you could just check if they're, if they're there, um, because it was for the flow of tra.
On the north side, right?
Right, on the north side. I can't remember if they said they do it on the, on the south side, but they agreed to put the no parking sign so cars aren't parked there where the bus parks so people can go around up there. Someone's looking to make the left by the Valero's there.
Oh, okay.
So you were allowed to park there. So they, they've agreed to put do no parking signs there. So small little victories.
Okay.
Antoinette, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yes, I know most of them and they know me, but.
Oh, we all know you.
For the public.
Yep.
Thirteen years a member of the task, uh, the Committee on Transportation, Safety, whatever you call it.
Traffic.
Traffic Safety.
But I, I can tell you, one of the things that I like that was done at Forge Road and twenty-five.
Put in the extra stop sign.
Well, not only the light traffic light that we put in, but you cannot make a right on red from a town road onto the state road. You can from the state road onto the side roads, but you cannot enter into the state road. There's no right on red on either direction. Whether you're coming off Forge Road or coming off Cromer. I love that. I wish, and, you know, back in the eighties when they did the right on red, it's controversial, but I hate right on reds, especially coming along the state roads.
We've asked for that, we've asked the county to do that at Northville and Meadow too.
'Cause you get one oh five and twenty-five, they don't even stop there.
Right.
They don't even stop. Even at Northville and one oh five. And it, it's, I wish there was no right on reds going from a, from a, onto a state road.
Or a county road.
The other way, yeah, wanna go off the state road, get on the side road, that's fine, but not the other way. I wish there was, I wish they would really look at that.
Interesting.
And we did get the letter back from the DOT about the, um, uh, the school. They finished their studying over there. They're.
I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, all, all we got was a message that they have finished collecting their data, um, but they haven't submitted any recommendations. That's where the, where the controversy over what the charter school was and there's no school crossing zone or school signs there.
No walkers.
Yeah, so that was, uh, that was something that we had, uh, referred over to DOT as well as Senator Laval. The school had done it. Um, so they have finished collecting their data and then hopefully before the end of the school, before the, at least before the school year starts for next, for next year, they'll have something, uh, in place over there.
Hold for it.
Yeah. One of the other things is I, I know that, that with the, uh, with the Traffic Task Force that we have done, um, we're meeting again uh, the end of this month and one of the things that we're looking to do for the fall is to have, uh, traffic, uh, control specialists out so maybe we can come up or with some, uh, key points, um, that we can present where, where, uh, we think that might be helpful. Um, Southhold, we'll see if they'll join us, um, at some of the spots also in their, in their town, uh, to be able to do that for this year. I know you have put through to possibly do a study for.
A plan.
A plan, uh, for parking. I know one of the, uh, things that had come up was possibly doing traffic, uh, one-way. I know I had spoken to you that. Um, possibly from Northville Turnpike over to, uh, the beginning where it opens up to the four-lane road in Southhold, um, during, just during the peak season. I know that kind of made your head spin. I know it takes a lot of studying to do that because there's a lot of driveways. There'd be a lot of public outreach. It's obviously not something that could be done for this year, um, but.
Intersections alone, it's eighteen intersections.
Yeah, we discussed that. We discussed that a bit.
You can't go into the four-lane?
I thought I did. Maybe I missed a couple along the way. And there's a lot of driveways too. I mean, that's, that's, that's the other thing. So whether it's a feasible or if it's too big a spans to do, um, I don't know, but it, you know, hopefully that would be something that would be caught into the scope of a study if we, if it does move forward, uh, to be considered.
So we did provide a letter of intent to the state for the consolidated funding grant for Riverhead and Southhold. And I know that Dennis Nuncaro in Southhold Supervisor Russell did attend the meeting and was not interested in another study, but a strategic mobility plan. And it was identifying choke points on Sound Avenue and how to identify those, whether it be roundabouts or other things in front of active farms that seem to be holding up the traffic when someone's trying to make a left into oncoming traffic to get into the farms that may be a roundabout there so that.
The roundabouts are great.
Yeah, so.
Court Street, Court Street and all that should be a roundabout right there.
Yeah, so those are some of the things that we're looking at in the traffic mobility, uh, plan and then that would leverage grant money in the future in order to create those roundabouts.
Yep.
Antoinette, anything else you wanted to share?
Well, I'm sorry I, I was late. I didn't realize, but, um, I thank you for the meeting. We did have, I brought the issues up to, uh, regarding speeding and I have seen an increase in police presence on Middle Road. Uh, not just their presence, but the fact that they are stopping drivers, which is important.
It is. It's the follow-through with everything.
Yeah.
Oh, it's definitely a bypass and people are.
And they're zooming. Uh, and to close your eyes and say, well, there's curves and there's dips and they're not. Well, that's enticing for some. And I'm sure a lot of the switters are our own residents in the town, not necessarily, uh, day trippers. But both, okay?
We did have success with the state on Middle Road because they did the study and they came back with forty-five miles an hour and we weren't happy with that. And we said that the parallel road, Route fifty-eight, is at thirty-five, so it should be reflective and they agreed with us and they said it at thirty-five. And that was good.
And, uh, in reality, I hope one day you can control, you have the say and not the state on the speed.
We got the news. It was brewed.
Yeah, so that was good news. Passed the assembly and it passed the senate, so it's on the governor's desk.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have to do is call him?
Yes.
And that's it.
No, it does, it does help if, if the constituents call and say that they would like to see that the town have control over the speed limits. It makes a difference.
Yeah, in the seventies and sixties, I knew his dad quite well. That doesn't mean I know Andrew, but I did know his dad.
You're not that old, are you?
Aw, please.
The other thing. I have a picture of V and I.
That was of concern to me and I did bring it up, is the trucks. The weight limit should not be eight. I did go on Wikipedia, got a list of the trucks that are eight tons and more. I know what I saw. There, there were eight-ton trucks. We don't need that. We need five as our max.
How does the state determine that?
We determine that.
We determine the load base.
The Highway Superintendent has.
Take them.
Most of the wheels are.
We try to look at what we don't want on the road.
He's brought that up. She has brought it up. Actually, he didn't want it to lowered from eight ton to five ton. The Highway Superintendent did not.
So it, I'm just, I'm curious. So there was a decision made, a, a, it was a discussion and a decision made to leave it to eight, leave it to eight ton.
No, there was not a discussion and a decision.
Not as, not as.
On our committee, there was no decision.
But I think it came out of your committee. It was last year.
In the beginning, yeah.
Right. It came.
And I think at that point, I'd be the first to admit it. I did not know what an eight-ton truck would look like. I thought it would just be a really big truck. My father years ago used to have a business where he had a truck. But when I went online after speaking with the supervisor and I saw what an eight-ton truck was, I said, I know what I saw. I saw trailers on that road. And chief then said at the last meeting that we had in May, they had given out six tickets in that month alone.
Eight.
Eight tickets.
Yeah.
Oh, it's even better. Two trucks that went by in excess of eight tons.
There was speeding. I think there were only two trucks in excess of the eight tons, right? Ch, one, one or two.
So it sounds, it sounds like it's a discussion for you guys to have back in the committee again. I think the committee did decide on the eight-ton limit there prior to no limit being there, but I see that you're looking to do a different one. I think bring it back there.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's pros and cons to both that maybe can, you can talk out in the committee.
There's only one roadway that's five tons and that's Parkway Street.
I, I thought you said Pecanic Bay. You looked up and you wrote it.
Eight tons.
Yeah, because I had.
I looked it up and then I looked it up again and said tons.
All right. I think even from Pecanic Bay, you should really revisit these things. These are not roads that are not meant to be bypasses for twenty-five and fifty-eight. They're not meant for that. They're lined with residential homes. People on, people on bikes. Those are the bike routes. You're putting a bike rider in competition with the truck?
I think more what you're asking, suggesting, because there is no shoulder there, there is a sidewalk, is, is more what you're, what you're, what you're talking about than, than.
Well, you're not gonna have those. The roads aren't wide enough for sidewalks, shoulders and everything you need.
The trucks are just too big and going too fast. That's the bottom line. It's scary.
It's, it's scary for anyone on a bike. You know, that's another point, but I didn't bring it up because of the bike rides. That was a concern when I saw there were trucks. Uh, we're lucky we don't have jogging trails along there. Then the.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no, um.
There's no room.
There's no shoulder for, for that, for that to fit. Yeah.
And the other thing I brought up is that in various pace, places throughout the town, there is a lack of speed limit signs.
Yes.
I gave the example of Rowan Oak, all right? The other one, and I brought it up to the supervisor because it was pointed out to me by a member of my community. You have an end forty miles per hour sign on Northville heading northeast.
Yeah, if you get past Doctor's Path.
Doctor's Path, between Doctor's Path.
And one oh five.
To one oh five, you end the forty. However, if you're coming south on the other side of the road. You can only go forty. You can't have that for the same strip of land. Same strip of roadway. You can't say this side of the road, you can only go forty. This side, you could do whatever hell. There's nothing posted.
Yeah, I think that chief made a note of that at the last Traffic Safety Committee and transferred it off to the Highway Superintendent, so.
Okay, so.
And we have to, uh, 'cause the speed limit already exists, so it's just a matter of posting it.
Right. It's just a matter of posting it and removing an incorrect sign. You know, and we're into tourist season, gotta get the act together soon.
All right, we'll follow up on that. I know you have mentioned that.
Yeah, and those, those are my really three things that I've been nagging for years.
Not nagging.
Come on, chief, you're being polite. He's being so polite.
John Dunleavy is telling you, she'd say, I can't see the intersection. He'd go, put a couple of phone books on your seat. That's what John used to say to you all the time, remember?
Right, 'cause I couldn't see. Right, because I couldn't see.
All right. Sitting on a couple of phone books.
Anything else that you wanted to report off or any particular goals you have for this upcoming year, just to address the issues that are ongoing and traffic safety throughout the town?
Be courteous, don't speed and don't text and drive. As last, last third, third Thursday of every month? Fourth Thursday. Fourth Thursday of every month. Anybody wants to?
Yes.
Eight thirty, right here. And they're gonna tell me, listening and we'll land out there decides they wanna make a suggestion or, or they, where would they do that?
Yep, they can. They can. They usually send an email to the supervisor's office and then the supervisor's office forwards it to Karen and Karen puts it on the agenda or Mary puts it on the agenda.
Or goes to Mary and then she puts it on the agenda. So contact either the supervisor or the chief of police to gather a complaint. You want them to address it at the traffic safety.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not unusual someone to come unannounced and we always take them first, we, you know, to get them in and out.
Right.
At what time again is that?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty to nine thirty.
Who beans? Because people, you know, people know their neighborhood better than most.
Yeah, no, it's very helpful.
It's just that the way I feel, the town knows better than the state what's on their roads.
Sure, and you guys know better than we do. We're just a bunch of pokey heads.
All right, call up, call up the governor.
Yeah, I will. I promise.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
And thank you for listening.
Sergeant Sewer Extension. Sergeant who? Sergeant Brost.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have the Sergeant Sewer Extension with Michael Reckel.
Thank you. No, no questions, no questions.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Is this Sergeant on fifty-eight? Not Sergeant on fifty-eight. Sergeant on fifty-eight? No. Do you still call the sergeants?
We still call sergeants. We still call start complexion pop nix.
Well, of course.
Okay, back in September two thousand and fourteen, a petition was filed with the town clerk's office to ex, for a lateral sewer extension. To service the sergeant's, the old sergeant's recreational property on Route fifty-eight. He is currently between the old Blockbuster property and the medical facility, North Fork Management Corp.
Right here, this, this thing here.
That's the, that's the specier, okay? Currently, we, the sewer district's main ends on the property of North Fork Management Corp. and it ends about eight feet short of Sergeant's property. Sergeant's used to be a retail store for motorcycles, quads, those sort of things. The owner's name is Sarge. So that's why we refer to it as Sergeant's Extension. The, there is two properties here that are kind of involved with this. That do not have sewer access from the front or the sides or the rear. The rear of the property is back up to the school, which has no sewer availability. There's no sewer on Route fifty-eight. But sewer does extend on to North Fork Management Properties, property and, and ends at the fence. So the request is to extend the sewer main about eight feet from North Fork Management's property on to Sergeant's property so that he can hook up. And develop the property. At the same time, we would request that Sarge allow an easement somewhere on his property. To extend over to the old Blockbuster Shopping Center to service it as well.
For big, for big lots and all that.
How is that serviced now?
Uh, they're on system, they're on systems, yes, yeah.
And it's on the other side of them too, though, too, right? Does, does, on the other side of this, where are they hooked up?
The property where the, well, the old wall bangs used to be, where West Marina is, that is hooked up through the end of Ackerly Street.
Okay.
Okay, so he, there, there's no sewer on Route fifty-eight in that entire area.
That area, okay.
It crosses on Roanoke Avenue and it crosses at Harrison Avenue. Everybody else is serviced from the rear and side streets.
So this is the last little piece of the puzzle that's not serviced, pretty much.
The, yeah, it's kind of like the, the hole in the donut that doesn't have sewer. He's in the sewer district. He's paying sewer district tax.
That's good.
This is the only parcel that's not connected?
No, I said it's, it's, it's like a hole in a donut that it's not connected.
I'm trying to get the analogy.
Well, I figured you'd understand a donut.
A hole in a donut.
So the, uh, what we'd be doing, it would be serviced, being able to, to service those two properties. Sarge currently and the other guy for the future.
The front piece.
The old Blockbuster property.
Right, the property, that, that whole thing is hooked up to Ackerly. So that, where the nail salon is and the old Blockbuster, all that, that.
And they, they've been looking for sewer for years and they're, they're kind of landlocked, so this would avail them to, for sewer as well.
And that would be the end of it. So that would be, that would be the ducked and munchkin stuck in the hole.
That would be the munchkin. One of the things to fool people to understand.
You hungry Jim? We're almost in exactly.
I don't think I was, but it's not talking about this. It's not very appetizing.
Laura, did you load up the closet? It is. Okay, good.
There's a resolution will be on for the next town board meeting. I'll be ready for the work session next Thursday. On the public hearing on the second of July and the public hearing will be on the first week in August.
Do you know what the development plans are for this property?
No.
No, we don't know. So we don't know what flow will be in the future.
They've been into planning work session a few times.
We don't know. They, they don't, they don't have anything yet either. I guess they've had interest.
Right.
And when they hear that there's no sewer, they go away.
Yep.
I get it.
I, I imagine that there was talk of restaurant use.
Well, we have capacity, I guess.
What's that?
We have capacity.
Um, yes, yes. If they're in the district, the district is, has their, the responsibility to, to service the properties that are in the district because they are paying sewer tax. One, one wrinkle that may be in the project is the. North Fork Management Corp's. You know, willingness to allow a sewer extension and an easement to go on their property. So there, there may be a possibility of condemnation, which we talked about like last year on the, on the property if it comes to that.
Depends how bad they want it.
Well, it, it depends on how, you know, you know, if the North Fork Management wants to negotiate or not.
Yeah, and we, we just did that with the Indigo property, correct?
Right.
Yeah, where we had put forth a resolution stating that we were going to.
Well, I could always put open to play nice in the sandbox.
Condemn a piece of property in order to accommodate the sewer line, because it's better to have everybody on sewers if the sewers are available than the septic system, so.
It is.
But, but it never came to that, which is good.
Right, because they ended up negotiating after that.
Right. Well, based on the value of what an easement would be across that parcel of property like that. So the, the owner, the attorney for the owner. Has, has had a, an easement agreement, non-easement agreement, but a, an estimate of what the easement would cost for condemnation. So he's gone. That'll be part of the map and plan also.
So he has an appraisal?
He has an appraisal of what the easement's value is. Eight feet of land, you know, twenty feet wide underneath the surface is a subservice easement agreement.
Running along the property line?
Nope, running out of the property.
So I'm talking about on North Fork's property?
On North Fork's? Like I said, we, we end eight feet short of the property line that goes to Sarge.
Got it.
So that's, it would be that eight foot swath for, for the width of.
How'd we end up short eight feet?
The request wasn't done at that time. Back in eighty-four, North Fork Management requested the extension. That used to be Bittersweet Flower Shop.
Oh, okay, so that, and then they.
And when they developed, they needed sewer to develop. So what they did was they ran the sewer along on an easement that, on the school's property. So the sewer district has an easement across the school's property to service the, the old Toys R Us and to service the Wendy's out front. And to service North Fork Management.
So what is it, cut in over here?
Yeah, runs right along here on this yellow line. This is Harrison Avenue.
Oh, I see, okay.
And it comes here and then offsets and goes to here.
And they can't go down and around, it's just too much?
Uh, yeah, because then he'd have to get an easement from, from the school and it just doesn't make sense.
Too far.
Engineering wise, because it's, it's eight feet here and it's, you know, five hundred and eight feet there.
Right.
Yep.
So.
Depends how well they'll play. How nice they'll be.
Yeah, yeah.
All righty.
All right, so that'll be on for the next, next work session.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to Michael. And now we move on to town board committee liaison updates. Anybody who'd like to update any of the committees?
Yep, the business advisory committee met with Laura and I on Tuesday. And it was a unanimous decision with one abstention that they request that the town board with the chapter two fifty-fives go back to the old application until December eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Rather than using the twenty-five page new application that we worked on and people are required to use. So they requested that we go back to the old application until December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, when they have had a ti, a chance for their ad hoc committee to review the application. And make, and meet with Laura Calamita and the chief of police and the fire marshal to make necessary changes. Because they're claiming that there are things in the application that are, were pulled out of Southampton Town that may not be applicable here. And they feel that there's information that was pulled out that's not applicable here from other applications. So they're requesting that we go back to the old application. The supervisor had expressed concerns saying that, you know, people have, that have already filed have. Used the long form application, so it wouldn't be fair to now go back to the old application when those people had to comply with the new application. But the committee feels that all of the applications for the rest of the year are probably in for the most part. And that any new application should be using the short form that we used to have until it's a full year cycle.
One of the, one of the other things that, that we had brought up is that as a town board, we had worked on this for many months with the input of our staff. And the input of our staff was, was with their daily use of these forms. So we came up with the application form. Have asked the business advisory committee, not at this meeting, but the previous meeting, and I reiterated it at this meeting, that they did have some concerns about some of the. Things that needed to be completed in the application. So we have asked them to take a complete look at the application instead of. Scrapping what we have, but to go through the process of going through the application. Coming up with their suggestions, their recommendations for the possible changes or what they thought was good or bad about the application. Then meet with our staff, Laura Calamita, who works with it on a daily basis, as well as our town clerk, invite them to one of their meetings. And then bring their recommendations back to the board prior to changing anything at this time since there is no late penalty for completing the applications at, at this time.
That's not, that's totally not unusual.
Yeah.
When you get new legislation, that has to be massaged for ever.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. Yeah, so.
So the question is to, does, the business advisory committee is requesting from the town board that they go back to the old application until December eighteenth, twenty nineteen? Or stick with the long form application? So that's what's before the board today. Like, what's the policy going to be until the new law actually?
Well, what, what would be the reason for going to the old? Because they don't want to learn the new?
No, because they're saying that there are things in the new application that aren't applicable and that.
Then write NA.
Well, then it, I don't know that it'll be accepted. That's why they already met with the chief of police, the fire marshal. They want to set up the meeting with Laura Calamita and the town clerk and go through each and every item. So they're asking until such time as they do that, which would be December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, the whole law would come into effect, the new application would come into effect and it would just be from that date going forward.
I can, I can appreciate their concern with that, but you're saying that from what you understand, a lot of the applications are already in this year, so it's probably, it might be a moot issue, right?
Well.
Yeah, come on up and join us.
State your name.
Jody, you're right. I think that a lot of the applications aren't already, everybody anticipated because of the changes, that they wanted to get their applications in early, so, which was good because.
And that's good, and that was our intent.
Right, that was the intent and we sent out the letters so that they did. So I think there's probably only a few, very few that might be turning in. And actually, some people will be turning in their applications like in the fall for the coming up year. Some of the runs, like the ten K runs, five K runs, all those, they seem to get their applications in very early.
Right.
So in anticipation of that, will they be doing the, going back to the old simpler form? Or are we gonna have them do the new updated form?
And then also the size of the, size of the events and every, and everything else. But are you learning as people are coming in, you're learning things in there that, with the applications, that can be adjusted and things like that? And I think the board is looking to sit down to do that and they're looking to sit down to do that with the input. When the business advisory actually goes over the forms and gives us their comment on the forms, you know, I would suggest that, that a lot of work went into that and, and we. Tweak with what we have fixed instead of going back and then starting from basically scratch again.
Should be, should be very simple and.
Yeah.
Now, Jody, you said some things they feel don't apply, that they're not applicable, that maybe they're a little bit more suited for Southampton, which is where we got our model from.
Yes. Yes.
And that's probably true, but if we could go through piece by piece, as was said, that would probably be the best idea.
Well, that's what they want to do, but they want enough time to sit down with you and with Laura and with the chief and with the fire marshal to go through that application line by line. And they're just asking, their request is to go back to the old application until the new law comes into effect December eighteenth, twenty nineteen. But it's a board decision, it's a policy decision, so.
Yeah, I actually was gonna say that. We're always glad to hear from people. I'm glad you're bringing everyone together to discuss it. However, in the end, it is our decision to make. We take in everything that we hear and then, you know, that's what we've been elected to do, to make the best decision we can. We can't always make the popular decision.
But it's, it, it's a work in progress, obviously, and we do need to tweak a little here and there to suit it to us specifically.
Well, let's get, let's get tweaking and we'll worry about it when the next application comes in. Right now, we don't have an application.
I think you'll get more in.
I'll look to see how many have come in and to see what, what's left to come in as, as our usual, our normal applicants, you know? I think we do about seventy-five a year, I think we said. So we'll look to see who hasn't submitted yet and who already has, so we'll kind of go on that too.
Well, one of the main problems was they were, so many were coming in late, correct?
Yes, that was, in the past, that was.
So. So these changes, although it has been a difficult rollout.
But that's, you know.
But we are getting them in early, more timely, which is what.
People did listen. They did listen and they got them in early and they're being, you know, good about that kind of.
And that's good.
And it is, it's hard to, you know, go from a simple form to go to a complicated form.
Right, right.
And there are times where Carol in my office has to stand at the counter and go through page by page.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, especially when they're claiming and they're standing at the counter that things are not applicable to them and there is no box that says not applicable, so it's questioned.
Right, right. Right.
So that's why the business committee wants to go back to the old form until all those kinks are worked out. But it's a board decision. I mean, I support the business committee, but it's up to the rest of the board if, whether or not you want to go back to the old application or want to keep the new one in place.
Well, I support the business community too, but I'm not sure that it's realistic, but.
Okay, so you're not in favor of going back to the old application? You want to keep the new one?
I think it's time, I think it's time, I mean, if there's some pages that we can throw out of this application that don't apply, then we have to work on that as, as a board to put something a little better structured together. But I, I don't see it to be, I think it's a moot issue, although most of the stuff's already in for this year.
If we could all sit down.
I mean, I, I, I'm not good at forms either, but I know when something applies and when it don't. I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could go back to, you know, I mean, I think that was the plan once when we got through this, this kind of crunch time and, and during the summer to sit down and, and review everything again. I think that was the board's discussion when we, we extended it because we'll take the feedback that we've gotten from the applicants coming in, hopefully.
I think it needs to be streamed, because it should be just a checklist.
Like then the business advisory can, can give us their recommendations as to the application itself and then we can sit down again and go through everything, so.
Right, if we could just find out which particular issues they're, they're having trouble with.
Well, that's what they want to do. They want to sit down with you and with Laura and they just want time to do that before the new application is in place, so they can say.
Yeah. That makes sense.
This is not applicable. Why do we have this in here? And if you had a reason why it's in there, or if Laura had a reason why it's in there, then you could explain to the business community and they might say, okay, that makes sense, leave it in. Or leave it out, so, right.
Or it can just be taken out altogether or just tweak it a little bit too.
So that's why they just wanted time to review it and to meet with everybody involved before the new form came into place. So that it's not considered incomplete if something on the form is not filled out.
Right, right, right.
So we've asked them to go back to the form, look through the form, come up with their recommendations and then hopefully then we can invite you and Laura to a meeting with them. And then you guys can, you know, kind of go over point by point with them and then that can come to the board.
Okay.
As we look, the board, as we look over our application.
Did you say board?
She did. So for now, everybody wants to keep it as the long form or go back to the old form?
Well, if this is gonna happen relatively in the next month or two.
Well, it's the business community that's working full time during the day and trying to set up meetings with Laura and Diane when they're here.
I, I understand, I understand. I understand who the business community is. Then why don't we just say while this form is being, if any application comes in between now and the time that we can adopt the, the form that we like, that.
I think, just run, run it at status quo until we make any other additional changes.
Status quo meaning the new application, the law.
What is currently in place.
Okay, okay.
Well, you know, I think the form needs to be comprehensive, but I don't, I mean, if we can tweak it so it's not so laborious.
Yeah, it's, it is much longer than it had been.
Yeah, it should be very simple.
I know, I picked one up, it's about this fact.
And that was at, that was at the recommendation of, of us as a town board working with Laura Calamita, who's been doing this to, to the town, for the town for a very long time.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that, 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 you know, that's a really important aspect of this. So to, to, to negate all of that, that we sat for months talking over, I don't, would prefer to, to continue to tweak that as we go along, which is what we said. When we originally did it, that we knew that there were going to be things that needed to get looked at and amended and fixed along the way. And I think that's the process that we're going in. We've given ourselves a full year to do that without any extra. uh, without any extra cost to the, to the community having the event, so, um, you know, without any late fees. So, I, I think we should continue in the direction we started.
So, that's the long form, the form that we.
That would be to continue, yes, to continue as we, as what we have in place now.
Not to go back to the old application, until it's tweaked. Okay, well, I think we should go back to the old application and I don't know, I, I know Laura and Catherine, I'm, I think I'm hearing that they want to stick with the new application. I don't know where the rest of the board is.
Well, I, I think, well, personally, I, I think if it's, it, forms could change all the time, all of them, not just Riverhead Town. And you have to learn the new form, I mean, that's the bottom line. If there's something that don't apply, we have to adjust it. I think if something comes in between now and, and the next six weeks when we get this thing, it shouldn't be a hard task to do.
Right.
Um, you know, if some, if something does come in that's big and, and, you know, may, maybe use the short form until we get the form. I mean, I don't care, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's that big an issue, I really don't.
Well, they did, so that's why they took a vote and asked to go back to the old form.
They took a vote?
Yes.
I'll think about it.
I mean, I, I'm not against tweaking it, um, but we put a lot of time and effort into it and there were reasons that we made these changes and they have to do with what, um, people within the town were telling us. So, uh, within, people who work within the town. So, I think we stick with this form and tweak it as needed and take feedback from everybody and, um.
Well, we listen to staff and all that, but the bottom line is we're responsible to the people that have to fill out these forms. We have to make them convenient, we have to make them simple, they have to make them.
I think we can.
And that's the, I think that's the objective.
It does seem rather long.
Of the committee is to make it, to simplify the form.
It'll be simplified, I would just think you look at it and you, you check off, I'm going to have two thousand people, we're going to have blah, 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 and then you look at the bottom line, just look at how much money we're going to get.
Right, so if you say, I'm going to have five thousand people and you check off that box and underneath that we would say a pub, Suffolk County Public Assembly permit is required, you know. So, just to make it more clear. But that's what the business advisory committee and the ad hoc committee is looking at.
Well, they'll get to work.
They are.
Every day.
They are.
Every day, it's real.
But they don't want it, the new application rolled out until the law actually takes effect on December, in December of twenty. The new application has been in place since December already.
Yeah, I don't.
So, to go back to the old one, then flip back to the new one and then not be able to correct the old, you know, what, what, I mean, using the document also could provide you with the information on how to fix it.
I still think it's a moot issue.
We also extended, two times we extended the grace period.
I look forward to.
We're trying to work with people.
Jim?
I look forward to seeing what the business advisory committee is going to tweak and what they're going to recommend.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think we should probably use the one we have.
Okay.
That we've been using.
You mean the new one?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's a moot issue with this.
My hope would be that anybody coming in with an application for the year two thousand twenty would be using an updated amended.
Right, that's what we're hoping.
Application.
So, let's, let, we'll, let's, we'll put it on.
They, some of them will be coming in, in the fall, they'll be coming in, some of them come in a ye- a year in advance, some of them come in.
Well, let's.
So, let, well, let's take a look at it again, you know, in, in July and August, we can sit down and take a look at it again.
Let's work at that, let's work to that.
Yeah.
Let's work to that.
And you know what would be helpful with the clerk's office is that there are maybe some businesses that are coming in that are not, are not familiar with the business advisory committee that may say, what is this, what is this? So, all the questions, if you had one master application that, where someone was questioning the same thing every time.
Right.
That you could be prepared to bring that back into us after you meet with the ad hoc committee and the business advisory committee and say, you know, this is something that people are always having a problem with.
Right, have issue with this particular point here, or this page or this section or, yeah, that's a good idea.
Right, yeah. That would be helpful. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much.
You're the best.
Anybody else have any updates?
No, I just, you better get your shoulders warmed up because we're getting ready for the cardboard boat races.
I have a couple of committees I want to report on.
All right.
Um, first of all, I talked here a few times that we were going, the Riverhead Environmental Advisory Committee was going on a field trip to the recycling plant. And we did, I never thought I'd be so excited about field trips to recycling plants and sewer plants. But, um, it was actually a very cool trip. I was amazed at how clean the place is.
Where'd you go?
Uh, we went to the one, um, where all our garbage goes.
Well, one goes to ice, the recyclings go to Islip.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's where you went, Islip?
Yes. And we specifically planned it for a day when Riverhead's garbage was coming in. Anyway, we got a lot of great information about what can and cannot be recycled. I mentioned it to you in an email, because I know you're working on something with the students. So, I'm, um, Kenny Rothwell put together a, a rather short list about what can be, uh, some tips for recycling. I'm going to give one to each of you and I'm just going to read this to let the community know.
Yeah, and the Key Club is, was going to come in today, but due to fi- and film, uh, video about recycling and, and, uh, plastics one and two and cardboards and things of that nature, glass. But because of finals and regents and everything else this week, they requested to hold off for another week. And I did reply to your email this morning asking if you could get me this. So, I would send it to him because Drew Dillingham and Shannon from engineering and myself have attended, I think, four meetings with Suffolk County and other municipalities about recycling. So, the Key Club does have all that information and, uh, you know, this is very similar to that. So, thank you for going though, it's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I just thought I would, I actually was glad when they weren't able to do it this week. So, you can give them this list just in case, there's something new on here.
Yeah. No, it's good.
Um, so, hard plastics that can be recycled are numbers one through seven. And that includes water, soda, milk, laundry detergent, yogurts, takeout containers. Plastic caps and labels need to be removed. Metals such as tins, aluminum, steel cans, aerosol cans, aluminum foil, pie plates, pots and pans and scrap metals can be recycled. Glass bottles and jars, all colors, but lids have to be removed before recycling.
So, open that beer before you put it in.
Okay, so, we were told.
Who would waste a good beer?
So, we were told that only plastics one and two are acceptable at the Islip recycling facility and this says one through seven. So, let's just clarify that before we actually send it in, because they, well.
Let's clarify that, so that's, so this is really good that we was discussing this.
This came from Kenny, he worked there for, you know Kenny Rothwell, he worked there for a few years.
Yeah, but, but anyway, the recycling facilities are not taking in all of these, like the, um, the, the yogurt, and it all has to be cleaned out too and takeout containers also.
Right.
They're not taking the takeout containers and the plast- certain plastics and things of that nature, so.
Well, Drew talked about it the day he was here, that if there's.
He said one and two only. He said one and two only.
All right, so that's, this is very helpful. So, now we, we have to, you know, to make sure before we, we produce anything that we have clarity.
Yes.
On, on how it works.
Yes, that's why the Key Club is working on it.
On the paper recycling, it's cardboard, newspaper, magazines, office paper, junk mail, envelopes, non-metallic wrapping paper. Paper and cardboard has to be dried. They said that if you put it out early and the cardboard gets wet, they can't use it.
Oh, for good sake.
Has to be dry. Never, never recycle these items. Plastic bags and wrap, and that's how they were judging as the towns were coming in. They were judging who did a good job on their recycling, because you could look right at the pile and see how many bags were in there. Um, styrofoam does not get recycled. Hangers, hoses, wires, rope, flammable materials, plastic utensils, soil paper, paper napkins, greasy pizza boxes, wax paper and twine. So, never, you, we should never put, they said to never bag up your recyclables. Um, no food or liquid, you have to empty all containers, no clothing or lenins. And I guess somewhere we have that you tie up things with twine, but they said not to tie up your recyclables.
So, for your paper products, don't, don't, don't tie them up?
Right.
I use my big brown yard waste paper bag and I put all my cardboards in that and then, when that gets full, which is normally like a month or two, I pick it up. Isn't that great?
It's, it's crazy, the things that are sent in through the recyclables. The day we were there, there was an urn there with someone's ashes.
Well, you know, it's, it's amazing, it's, you know, as.
Not from Riverhead.[1607.71]